I see some eyeballs.
All right, call them in their order, please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Steve Bergerson, welcome, thank you for coming.
Let us pray. Lord, our town council gathers this evening with a heavy heart mourning the death of their colleague Keith McMahon. Thank you for his passion to serve our community and the contributions he made to make Fountain Hills a great place to live. Bless his memory and may his example of service inspire others to follow in his footsteps. Guide now our town councils and make important decisions without the perspective of a fellow council member Keith McMahon. We ask all this in the name of the one who conquered the grave, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you Pastor Steve from Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church. Roll call, Bev.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino is absent, councilmember LaGue.
Here.
Councilmember McHansen is absent, Vice Mayor Oshambo.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
All right, thank you Bev, we've got obviously a couple councilmembers not here and most namely we've got Councilmember Keith McMahon missing, I know Councilmember Hansen would be here, she had a rather nasty dental appointment and she won't be here tonight and better news is that Councilmember Cantino's celebrating the graduation of his son from the Sheriff's Academy, so that's where he is at tonight, but I know their hearts are with us and with the family of former Councilmember McMahon, all of our hearts and staff hearts and many in the community, if not everyone, has been, their hearts have been on Keith and we're going to miss him terribly. We've got a nice little display up here with them with a nice picture and rose and we're each wearing green carnation over our hearts to symbolize our care and concern and love for Keith and we're going to miss him terribly. He's obviously someone that's made a tremendous impact in Fountain Hills and truly gave his all for his community and the community gave their heart back to him and he's left an incredible mark with us, we're going to miss him deeply and as far as his service on this town council, you know, his perspective he brought years and years of perspective from our town before we were, before we were a town, before we were a municipality, you know, Keith was involved almost from day one and he brought that experience to the council meetings along with the passion for small business and for most everyone that he knew in the community, he was a volunteer or associated with you in our community, one form or another, and truly left his mark and he will be missed terribly here. I did talk to his sister and they are making arrangements to get the entire family out here to Arizona, none of them are out here, so it's going to be some time before that'll happen, but they have firmed up a date, it'll be Thursday, April 23rd at four o'clock for a service at Christ Church, so make sure that's on your calendars. It is a little bit of a time, but it's that important that all their family members get out here and are together for that service. That'll be at Christ Church at four o'clock on the 23rd of April, Thursday night, Thursday afternoon at four o'clock. So we look forward to that, until then, we're going to miss him terribly and we'll say our goodbyes there at that service and I know Keith would want us to continue with our meeting tonight, he wouldn't want us to miss a beat and to continue to do the towns business, so here we are to do our towns business, so that's all I have to say, but we're going to miss Keith, he was a great friend and somebody that I know we all cared for very deeply, he did a great job for our community and he will be missed. All right, now we'll move on to the business. We've got public appearance, one by Mark Mayer, who is going to be introducing us to sculpture titled Blue Spire, proposed to be purchased by the Public Art Committee and a steel sculpture titled Red Lady in Steel, being proposed as an addition to the Public Art Committee's prospect catalog list. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. First of all, and members of the council, as has been our practice, as called out in the revised combined Public Art Master Plan, we bring items forward for your initial introduction, that's what I'm doing this evening, to bring to you this particular piece. Again, as I've mentioned to you before, the committee has been receptive, I think, at the Public Art Committee to trying to bring a variety of art pieces forward, this one obviously is not the typical bronze sculpture that sometimes we see. It is proposed to be placed ultimately in the lobby of the community center, the community center folks have met and have approved this particular piece and recommending it to you and also the location. I'll be bringing it back at a future council meeting for your consideration of approval. Second item, again, is a little bit different, we haven't done this particular one before, but it is a piece that the Public Art Committee is asking that you consider and have it placed in your, for lack of a better term, possibles section in your manual. It is an item that they want to consider further, they're not at this time going to be bringing the item forward, but they do want to see if I can get the screen to keep up with my mouth. There we go. A little bit more, obviously, of an abstract piece, again, not typical bronze feature, it is titled Red Lady in Steel. And this item, again, we will make copies of this for you and place them in your boxes and we ask that you just simply place them in your art manual and at some point, the commission may or may not bring this back for your full consideration.
Any questions for Mark? And please Mayor.
Thank you Mayor. Mark, you talked about the blue piece, I forget what it was called.
Blue Spire.
Yes, the Blue Spire being placed in the community center in the lobby. One of the questions I've got is the committee, the commission, the community center commission being making or being made aware that if we get too many pieces there, it may hinder traffic in the lobby or the use of the lobby if you have a group in there running the ballrooms that maybe extends out into the lobby, are you guys being mindful of that?
Yes, and the commission is very mindful of that, too. One of the things that we did, and it's included in the Public Art Master Plan manual they have, is they actually went through and worked with the commission to come up with specific locations. This is one of those locations, it actually is way over in the corner and we replaced one of those ficus trees that's in there now.
Okay.
So I think it will definitely add to the lobby, much more than that artificial ficus tree was.
Yeah, I'm sure it will, thanks Mark.
Yes, Councilmember LaGue.
Mark, just for clarity purposes for the public, I know we're proposing this and we'll be taking a look at it again in the future, how will this particular piece, the Blue Spire, be paid for or funded, please?
Actually, what they're proposing is it would come from the 1% Public Art Fund, as you know, we've used that fund now a couple of times for purchasing public art. It is a fee collected that is separate from the general fund, specifically for this purpose. It's also, I should add, made possible because of the donation that we received to fund the full cost of the Freedom piece, otherwise we wouldn't be bringing this forward at this time, so it's important to mention that as well.
And on that note, I'm not sure if anyone has seen Freedom on the Avenue, but it is just outstanding. I'm really, really glad we ended up with that particular location, it is just really outstanding, if you haven't seen it, go take a look at it. And Mayor, if I may, just one last question, the community center advisory commission is, has reviewed and is on board with the placement of this in the lobby area?
That's correct, they have reviewed it and did approve it.
Okay.
Again, I will include that in my staff report.
Very good, thanks Mark, thanks Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark on the pieces and the process? Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Next item is recognition of service, Parks and Recreation Commissioners Tom Bavarek, Naomi Bryant, Ernest Cofrances, and McDowell Mountain Preservation Commissioners Wendell Oliphant and Wayne Toll. Mark, I'm supposed to call on you once again, but I'll certainly come down and recognize those that could be here and we will recognize all of those folks tonight, unfortunately. Most folks already know that Mr. Ernest Cofrances and Mr. Wayne Toll have passed away recently and I know Bev Toll will not be able to be here tonight, neither will Tom Bavarek, but we'll certainly give the plaques to them and their families and we certainly will look forward to honoring them and having, passing these along to their family, but tonight we've gotten is Naomi Bryant and Mr. Wendell Oliphant here, so come on forward, both of you.
All right, ladies first, Ms. Naomi Bryant, you've served for quite a while and thank you very much. What the plaque here says, Naomi, is appreciation for your dedicated service to the town of Fountain Hills and as a Parks and Recreation Commission member from January 2004 to December 2008. Very much from the town of Fountain Hills. Naomi, good job so much, you did a great job. All right, Mr. Oliphant, this plaque says appreciation for your dedicated service to the town of Fountain Hills as a McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission member from April 2006 to July 2008. Thank you very much.
All right, third presentation is a snake safety presentation by Fire Chief Scott Legreca. Welcome Scott.
Good evening Mayor and Council, Andrew, Ms. Getty, thank you very much for allowing me to address this subject with you tonight, give me a second here, we'll get this up and running. Okay, there are several reasons why I wanted to address the public this time of the year and we try to do this every year, is the issue of snakes. Most people would kind of first blush think that that's kind of a trivial subject, but there's three main reasons why we would like to discuss this and we do discuss this on an annual basis and you'll also note that in the town's webpage underneath the Fire Department section, this PowerPoint is there for the community to look at it, but there's three reasons why I want to discuss this tonight and one is obviously the safety of our citizens, response time, and the cost of this service. Turn your back this up, Bev. Okay, just go forward that button there. Okay, again, as I said, it's snake season, time to protect yourself, you need to remain alert to potential presence of snakes, illuminate your walkways and keep clear of vegetation and especially if you think you're going to be going out later in the afternoon and coming back at night and you're going to use your front door, please turn on your light before you leave. Snakes like to go to front doors, for some reason it seems to be like cave-like area forum, a lot of people have pots and it's the spot that we find snakes, so please turn on your lights. Block access points to enclosed yards, install gates firmly against the ground, and keep home and garage doors closed. You would not believe how many snakes we take out of not only garages, but inside people's home, it's a lot. And if you do get a snake in your garage, just leave it alone, don't close the door, just give us a call, because all you're going to do is drive that snake into a harder place for us to get to, so just leave it. Snake's natural camouflage makes them difficult to see, be cautious of where you step and reach, especially this time of year when you're starting to work in your yard or you're on the golf course and you happen to hit out into the desert, be very careful. In fact, one of our town employees several weeks ago while working in her backyard had an incident, she got bit, spent a couple of days in the hospital. So don't let this happen to you and believe it or not, this happened to one of our firemen. Snake statistics, Fountain Hills Fire Department responds to in 2004, almost 1,100 snake calls and a few years prior to that, we almost hit 1,400 calls. 2005, we were down to 829 and this past year, we got it down to 462. So why is that important? With the cost of diesel fuel, wear and tear on apparatus, tire replacement and that, if we can knock off 1,000 calls a year for snakes, it's going to have an impact on our budget. So, you know, we asked you to cooperate with when to call and when not to call. Please call if someone is bitten, obviously. Snake is in your house or garage or blocking access, is immediate life threat to people or pets on the back porch, that type of thing, it's in a fenced yard and can't get out, please call the emergency, non-emergency number 480-945-6311. Please hold your call if the snake is non-venomous. The snake is not a threat, it's in the street or crossing your property. Late evening, it will likely be gone in the morning and yes, we do get calls at 1:00 in the morning when people come home from wherever they're coming at that time of night, that there's a snake in their yard. You know what, in the morning it'll be gone. This is a non-venomous snake here, it's kind of hard to see, it's a bull snake, the way you can usually tell if it's a non-venomous snake is it's not going to rattle. Two types of snakes that we have here in town mainly are rattlesnakes and these bull snakes and they kind of look a lot like a rattlesnake, but they just don't have the rattle on there. Even the rattlesnakes are good to have in your yard because they'll eat mice and rodents and the bull snakes, the bull snakes will eat rattlesnakes. So, you know, if you have a five or six foot long bull snake going through your yard every month, keep them there, you want them, he looks impressive, but he's harmless. So again, if you see a snake crossing your property, just give them a little bit of time and eventually, that snake is going to move on. But if you need us, we're here for you and your Fountain Hills Fire Department will be more than happy to come out and alleviate that problem, but any way that you, the public, can work with us to make sure that you truly need our assistance, it's really important because when we go out on your snake call, you know, we're putting our units out of position for emergency calls. And so, again, you know, it's safety for our public, it's positioning of our response vehicles and yes, it is a cost factor. Any questions on snakes?
Any questions for Chief Legreca? I know that I've got a good friend, his wife this time last year was kind of removing dead leaves and such from behind a wall, just grabbed and grabbed a snake and so I don't think it was a rattlesnake, wasn't it Henry?
We use the average about two bites a year here in town.
That's my wife.
And usually out of those two bites, one's going to be a golfer. And let me just add one more point, if you do get bit by a snake, a rattlesnake, don't be embarrassed by that and decide that you're going to remove yourself to the hospital. Too many things can happen to you in route, you really need to call 911 and let us take you in. We don't carry the snake venom on board, but if you should happen to go into shock or respiratory arrest or any of those other things, you know, we're in a position to be able to do something for you, so don't be embarrassed, call 911 and let us get you to the hospital, you'll probably get faster service there anyways.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Chief. All right, now move to call to the public, any speaker cards, Bev?
Yes Mayor, we have one, David Carabardi.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening everybody. First of all, our deepest sympathies for the loss of Mr. McMahon.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Carabardi and my wife Marcia and I have been property owners in Fountain Hills for 22 years and recently retired from our jobs in Michigan and are anxious to build on our dream house on our lot and move here permanently. I would like to request an amendment of town regulations regarding Rule 504, hillside disturbance. I'm requesting the creation of an avenue for a large lot owner that is only splitting his lot in half and conforms to all the lot split requirements, to seek an exception to the subdivision disturbance rules that this lot split action places him under and grant both new lots the standard four times allowance for disturbance. This suggested process should include P&amp;Z and council review and approval of each individually exception request to ensure neighborhood consistency is maintained. No such methodology currently exists and I feel Rule 504 is overly punitive, is currently applied to all situations without exception and this rule stops the town from receiving the added income from dual development fees and the extra tax base addition to two possibly multimillion dollar properties instead of just one. I simply want the chance to state my case to the proper authorities in seeking relief from Rule 504. Thank you very much for your past and present consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carabardi.
I have a whole lot of backup and everything, but that's more of an opportunity that I'm looking forward to presenting to P&amp;Z and to yourselves in another form.
Appreciate it, thanks for coming. Anyone else, Bev?
No, Mayor.
All right, now we'll move on to the, yes, I'm sorry.
I want to take advantage of this time to report that I went to the state of the city address from Mayor Gordon and I wanted to just tell you a little bit about that, they gave us this because it does reflect on all cities, that he's going to be aiming for some green changes in the city, making it the greenest city in the nation. Some of the things that they're looking at, which are things that we've discussed here, are solar power and of course collecting, reusing water, using those LED lights which we're going to be doing here, promoting community gardens and other things like that. And all of those are in varying stages of shovel ready, which is one of the things that we've discussed here as far as the stimulus money goes, which is a key qualification in being eligible for those. The newspaper, The Republic, reported that this is a chance to make the Phoenix region because the effort must be valued wide, a model and a leader in sustainable strategies that cities around the world will have to consider. I think the meeting was last Wednesday, he was going off to DC like you were Mayor to look into securing some funding for Phoenix, but he did make a point of mentioning that that's a good thing for all of the cities and we all benefit if all of our areas thriving. So I just wanted to let you know, I was there representing us and the agency.
Good, well, thanks for picking up some more things that we can learn from, from other communities, bring back to your working group and figure out if it's a good application or something to consider for our town.
Thank you.
Good, and as I was going to mention, Councilman Dickey mentioned, I did get to head to Washington, fortunately under a scholarship for a crisis management workshop and just so happened, the League of Cities and Towns was doing their, or National League of Cities was doing their Congressional Cities Conference and there was additional training there for that and an opportunity to meet with our senators and congressmen, so more to come on that, but thank you for that update. Onto consent agenda, look for a motion to approve consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Roll call, Bev.
Councilmember LaGue.
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oshambo.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
4-0.
Thank you. Onto the regular agenda, that one report on items three and four, Chief Legreca will go over these items, consideration of Resolution 2009-08, accepting a federal emergency management agency FEMA and Department of Homeland Security DHS grant in the amount of $35,000 for fiscal year '08 assistance to firefighter for the purchase of seven new mobile radios. May I get a motion? So move.
Second.
I guess I'll get a presentation first, sorry guys, I'm getting ahead of myself here. And the other item I'll be going over is consideration of purchase agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and Motorola Inc. for the purchase of those 700/800 megahertz radios not to exceed $35,000, so only here, the good news here.
Mr. Mayor, how's it, this is the second year now that we've been successful in receiving FEMA grants for the firefighters assistance fund, last year if you recall, we received about $53,000 to upgrade all our existing radio equipment. This year here, we put another grant request in to start the upgrade, our future radio equipment to go into the 700/800 band megahertz frequency, that's the frequency that Phoenix Fire Automatic Aid Dispatch, which encompasses 21 communities in the valley, will be using within probably a year. Mesa Topaz Group, which you're somewhat familiar with, has already turned on their 800 system and also Maricopa County Sheriff uses the 800 system. So by going out and getting this first seven radios to put into our trucks, we are going to be able to open up communication avenues, even though they're not perfect because some of the tower infrastructure's not there, but we'll have a better opportunity to communicate with Maricopa County Sheriff rather than just one mutual aid channel. We will be able to communicate to a certain degree with the Mesa Automatic Aid Dispatch and then when the Phoenix Automatic Aid Dispatch turns their system on, probably sometime next year, that'll allow us to have seamless communication, in particular with the city of Scottsdale, seeing they are into that system. So this is the first big step in taking a stroll down that future road for communications for our community and this is the second phase of probably a four-phase grant request that we're going to be trying to do to upgrade our system, including the EEOC this year and potentially moving towards that automatic aid system a year or two down the road or three years down the road. So we're pretty pleased that within the last year, year and a half, we brought in close to $85,000 of money with just a 10% match from the town to get this radio equipment and one other sidebar note, over the last year and a half, we brought in almost $20,000 to purchase extrication equipment from the governor's office, the highway of safety, with no match, so even though we're not quite up to speed with Mark's Parks Department as far as grants, we feel that we've had a pretty successful year and a half and we hope to be successful going forward with this grant process.
Very good, thank you, any questions for Chief, Vice Mayor?
Thank you Mayor. Chief Legreca, how does that help us in communications with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, are they on the same, are they using the same type of radios?
They're in the 800 megahertz band, so when we receive our radios, we will be able to take them to the Maricopa County Sheriff and have one of our bands with their channels there, you know, we probably won't put all their channels on our radio, but we'll put the channels that we're most interested in, obviously the tactical channels that they use here, channels that they use up to B-line, lake rescue and that type of thing, so that'll give us much better interoperability with our police department here in town rather than relying upon one sole mutual aid channel.
Okay, thank you Scott.
Thank you very much Scott, appreciate the presentation and the efforts to acquire the equipment utilizing funds that are available outside of our municipality, so most appreciated. So here's what the motion I'll look for here, the move to approve Resolution 2009-08, accepting the FEMA DHS grant and using proceeds to purchase seven 700/800 megahertz radios from Motorola.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any other discussion? Anyone from the public?
No, Mayor.
All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
Mayor 40.
All right, thank you. Covers both items. Andrew, right?
Purchase agreement is listed separately. Probably should have it.
Okay. All right, look for a motion to approve the purchase agreement between Town Fountain Hills and Motorola for the purchase of those radios.
I move that we approve a purchase agreement between the Town Fountain Hills and Motorola, Inc. for the purchase of seven 700/800 megahertz radios not to exceed the amount of $35,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone from the public on that item?
No, Mayor.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post?
Mayor 40.
All right, thank you. Next item is consideration of a services agreement with 3D International, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $207,505.69 for the Dirt Alley Project Phase One. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Watch out for those snakes.
Be right with you. I don't need snakes on this project. Thank you. I've been admiring the picture of Councilman McMahon ever since we started, and that picture's very appropriate. That smile on his face is one that I have remembered for over 25 years, and we had a wonderful relationship together. So, it's just a wonderful person that did so many things for our community, just as you've mentioned. Thank you. This project, this alley paving project, is one that I spoke to all of you about at the work study, and so I'll try not to be too lengthy and talk about that. It, I recognize that this project is well over our budgeted amount, which was $64,000. And I'll just quickly, again, for the public's edification, go over the differences that we had in this project. As I mentioned, it was $64,000. This project is $207,500. And the big ticket items that we saw were mostly the driveways that connect and the fact that many of these businesses were built before incorporation where the standards were different and so many things that have changed over the last 25 years. The driveway work itself is in addition approximately $61,500. The erosion control, the decomposed granite and the keystone retaining walls that are required, and I'll show you that location when I move along through this presentation, was over $30,000. And then the quality control, the fencing, the clearing and grubbing, and the material export and the mobilization was close to $37,000. And we also had a 5% contingency of $11,000. I'll take you through some of these photos that we did. This location here is the, is just south of Colony Drive, where the alley begins on the north, and the pavement is existing at this location. And out here is Colony Drive, and over on the left is a lakeside auto sales area. That's, I think, just gives a good representation of what this alley could like, look like if we continued down the road with this asphalt. This is a location that is just the short or just south of where I took the first picture. We, when this alley's paved, you will not see the dumpsters, you'll not see the parked cars, you'll not see the trash laying in the street. We will post it for no parking. The pavement will be 24 feet wide, and the edge of pavement, where it comes out to the existing walls, there'll be a buffer area of about three feet to where these walls are. And you'll see some more of that as I move through this. This is another picture where we have material that's been somehow imported over the years. We have a difference of about three or four feet in here that we have to remove this material as well. This tree fortunately can stay, and we're trying to keep any vegetation that we can. This is another area looking north, and you can see that the driveway grades are pretty severe that we have to remove and try to get the grades to fit with the alley because of the amount of drainage that we have as well as the grade control that we need. This particular situation is very close to the last slide, except that what you can see here is you can see where this owner actually built little ramps because he's trying to keep the water out of his business. Some of these businesses have actually been flooded because of the amount of water and the way that the street or the alley is graded. This is just a, I did not tilt the camera on this. This is actually the straight grade that comes across, and there's an extreme slope that we have to repair so that they have ingress and egress. This is a picture that on the right shows where the men's club is, and the men's club has been flooded a couple of times from the alley water, the drainage. We actually built in a little asphalt ramp here to keep the water out from coming in the back door over here. We're grading this in such a way and paving it so that the water will no longer come into the men's club. This particular situation is probably the easiest one. It's just a little asphalt ramp that the owner has. We'll just saw cut this and pave up right against it for them so they have much better access. This is the east end of the alley where it ties into Panorama, and we're going to be building a little keystone retaining wall around these trees. We thought we ought to try to preserve these trees. They've been there for a long time. They're behind Ha Ha China, and we can pave right up next to the keystone retaining wall and still have decent ingress and egress, ingress and egress. I took this picture because I wanted you to see an alley that has been paved and how good they look. And this is actually in a multifamily residential area. We paved this alley back in 92, 93 with the bonds that were handled this particular project. As well, this was, the alley was also paved. The alley that we're proposing will not have this concrete valley gutter down the middle. The reason that we put these particular valley gutters in is when we have a very slight grade where it takes, the water doesn't get out very well. We don't have that situation in the alley that we're going to pave, the water runs just fine. So, we don't need to pay extra for that concrete work. This is an alley that was paved probably 30 years ago. Since this alley was paved, there's been a building that's been built there on the left, and you can see that they've actually just put some riprap in. It works very nicely. They've taken that riprap and put it right up against the edge of the asphalt, and so it drains fine and it protects the walls as well. That's the same picture, just a little different angle. This particular alley, I took this picture because I wanted you to see how nice these bins can actually look if they're done right. This alley on the, this bin is over here on the right. It's out of the way. It's, again, in the multifamily zone. Does a great job. It beautifies the alley and it beautifies the neighborhood. That's all the pictures I have. Again, you know, we are very comfortable with this alley paving. We recognize that this is a part of the PM 10 measures that we have agreed to with MAG on the IGA, and we had hoped that we would have this project performed by June 30th. And so, we are ready to move forward. I will tell you that the, there were opportunities for three Fountain Hills contractors to bid on this work. We asked 3DI to go to those Fountain Hills contractors and keep this work local. I'm told that there will be a Fountain Hills contractor, performance paving, that will do this work, and so I'm happy to keep this work in Fountain Hills. That's about it. You know, our suggested motion would be moved to approve a contract with 3DI International, Inc. to construct the Dirt Alley paving Phase One in the amount not to exceed $207,505.69. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on this project.
All right, thank you. Have any, anyone from the public on this?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll first look for a motion here.
Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve the contract with 3DI, Inc. to construct the Dirt Alley Project Phase One in an amount not to exceed $207,505.69.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I'm very sensitive to the fact that there's not necessarily a lot of parking on Colony Drive, but there's actually a lot of parking on Colony Drive, not a lot off parking on Colony Drive, because some of the businesses there that were built earlier on didn't, just wouldn't meet the town code today for parking spaces. And I was curious when I saw the cars parked in the alley back there, is there parking spaces for those cars on the businesses that those cars represent?
Mayor and Councilmember, because of the age of a lot of these buildings, there may be parking, but there may not be sufficient parking because the standards are different now than they were then. But, as we move through this project and we talk to the businesses, we did see a lot of parking. I think that with restaurants and different things at night, there may be not sufficient parking. Some, my experience of my own going there was that I could park over in another business that wasn't open at night, but the restaurant was, and so I could take advantage of that parking. I see some shared parking that seems to go on. I see a lot of on-street parking. One of the things that we discussed with the businesses was the fact that because we're taking care of these driveways, I think it will encourage people to access through the rear and into the parking if there's, if they can't find parking. But, we would prefer that it be posted no parking in that alley. We think it's a fire issue as well as it just creates a tough access for that alley if there's parking allowed in there.
Yeah, and I'm not taking issue with the no parking. I'm just curious that we, that we've looked to see if there's a way to get those cars off the alley into the businesses. You know, I know where that alley is, and some of those businesses or the places where they rent are front Saguaro Boulevard, and if we can ever get forward with eliminating that access street there, that would, that would increase their parking lots, I think, and also give us better ingress and egress off Saguaro Boulevard. So, I'm encouraged that that will probably happen at some point. The other question I had was on the dumpsters. Are the businesses going to be required to get, you know, the dumpster enclosures or spaces in that area, or do they have a spot for those containers?
Mayor and Councilmembers, some of them do have container areas and some of them don't. We've had several neighborhood meetings with them. We, our plans, actually, we drew our plans so that we designed angled slots for them to come in, and we'll assist them in the building department to get those off of there if they can't accommodate them on their own lots. They like that very much, that we were willing to work with them and help them find a spot. Of the 22 lots, we're modifying 17 of the driveways, and we met with many people about how they could do that and how we could assist them with that design. We actually have a detail for them if they'd like to come in that will, they'll be able to put with their building permit. And we have temporary construction needs with every single lot in that alley that we acquired.
Well, thanks, Tom. Appreciate staff working with those businesses. I know you guys worked hard on that particular alley to meet not only the state PM 10 areas but to, you know, be as business friendly as possible, and I appreciate everything staff's been doing. Thanks, Tom.
Any other questions or comments, staff? Councilmember Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments. Tom, appreciate the time you put into this particular project. I know in our work study session, you had an opportunity to present this in greater detail to our full council, and as you pointed out this evening through your photographs, it certainly does enhance the aesthetics of the alley. But I think it's important for the benefit of the public in that we are spending a significant amount of money on this project, that if you could just take a minute to talk more about PM 10 and the notion that that, in fact, is a mandate, that this is an unfunded mandate and that we need to move in this direction. So, in addition to aesthetics, what are the other benefits and how will paving of this bring us in line with what we're required to do through those mandates?
Mayor and Council, I'll do my best here. I may ask for some assistance from our town attorney as I move through this, and since we work closely on the IGA with MAG. But, as you mentioned, we did sign the IGA with MAG that we would complete the alleys. We would pave all the alleys in Fountain Hills. It's a five-year project. This is the first alley of Phase One to do that. We, there is a 5% plan that MAG has developed in which we are to decrease the particulates in the air, and we will continue every, they will continue every year to do that until the air gets cleaner. The reason being for the state of Arizona is that there, there's a concern that federal funding will not funnel down to state of Arizona if we don't clean up this air, and so all municipalities have signed these IGAs with them. And please correct me if I'm going wrong here, Andrew, and I'll take that liberty to say that, you know, if we are moving in the direction of PM 10 to clean up the air and at the same time, we're hoping to get stimulus package from the federal government, it seems as though we would be taking a step backwards by hoping that we would get federal fund at the same time not fulfilling our IGA with MAG. So, it just, I think, builds the case, the Fountain Hills is doing what they said they would do in fulfilling that contract or that IGA.
Is that?
Thank you, yes. I just, I know we toss around acronyms oftentimes, PM 10, so forth and so on. I think it's important for the public to know that, you know, these are aesthetic improvements. However, we are mandated to move in this direction to mitigate dust, so in addition to aesthetics, we're mitigating dust and we're doing our part, and in fact, we're required to do that. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other dialogue, questions?
Thanks for explaining the significant, I mean, now for a second time, increase in the cost. Obviously, this is a alley that's been there before incorporation and has been inherited and having to remove a large amount of debris and soil or whatever it may be considered is going to add to the cost. It's unfortunate that it is going to be this costly, but it is something that's going to add value to that area as well as be more business friendly and meet our commitments that we've made. So, not an easy thing to chew on, but something that's necessary to get done. So, appreciate the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
And as well, you know, that we keep our contractors here in Fountain Hills busy as well, so that's appreciated.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Mayor 40.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. All right, consideration and possible direction for negotiations relating to proposed agreement with respect to an entertainment venue. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to propose the motion that we move forward with the, giving direction to the mayor, the town attorney, and the town manager as discussed in the session.
We got a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
Mayor 40.
Thank you. All right, council discussion direction to the town manager. Julie, great job tonight. Thanks for filling in as our deputy town manager today for Rick Davis, who's off on spring break with kids. Nice to see you. Thank you for making sure we're all prepared for today. And I know that Mr. Carabardi had something that was brought up and called the public, and he had materials that you probably would get the staff for consideration and what he'd like to have looked at, but was there anything else that came out of tonight's meeting that you need to take back with you tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor, but, and Mr. Davis couldn't be here this evening, but I know that we worked together just an update on some of the activities of this week. just an update on some of the activities of this week. We attended meetings every day, with the exception of today, with the department directors going over the next year budget, the details of next year's budget. So he was heavily involved as he and I worked all week with that, with the department directors. In addition, we, the Fire Services Committee, met this week to start the negotiation and review of the rural metro contract.
Good. Thank you for those updates. And summary, council requests, reports, some recent activities. We'll consider that done and I'll look for a motion to adjourn before so doing so. I just wanted to repeat if anyone missed the update on services for Councilmember Keith McMahon. They will be again in April, Thursday, the 23rd of April, at 4:00 at Christ Church in Fountain Hills. So there'll be more to come on that. But just so folks would know what's coming, then that was a request to, of the family to make sure that they could all be here to celebrate his life with us. So again, Thursday, April 23rd at 4:00 at Christ Church. So we're going to miss them, miss everyone out there watching television, all the staff here and many, many others around our great country will miss Councilmember McMahon. He's a lovely guy with a tremendous laugh, great sense of humor. And a love for Fountain Hills that can't be topped by anybody that's been here either before him or is here today or will be in the future. So we'll miss him greatly. Thank you for caring for Councilmember McMahon while he was here with us and continue praying for his family with this great loss. So with that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second, anyone? No seconds?
Second.
All right. All right. Keith did our second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.